Good morning, everybody. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Today is February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, eleven A.M. In the Commission's Chambers Room. We will start off today with a prayer by Monica Hill and a pledge by Brenda McDonald. Please silence your... Oh, she just know... Please silence your phones if you...
Father, we're grateful that we can be gathered here. For commission meeting, I say we're grateful for the constituents of our county and for our public service individuals, all those who protect us and help our county to remain safe. Father, we are grateful for the financial stability that we have in our county and for all those who serve those around them. We ask thee to bless this meeting, Father, that all will be well, that we may be able to come together to discuss ideas and to make plans for the county that are in the best interest of those who live here. And are grateful to give you such a sense that Jesus Christ is...
Amen.
Thank you.
Let's call thee in the pleasurable legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, a little bit of a... Little bit up front here, we're gonna move item number ten to number three on your agenda. If that's a...
Oh, the phone?
Okay, you got a phone there, we're gonna have to look...
Rick's not in here, is he? I didn't even get a chance to call. I don't know how to put this across the system. Do you?
I do not, but maybe text Brenda.
Maybe go to one more and then I'll try to hurry and get Rick down here.
Okay, Liz? Okay, we'll go ahead and have the approval of the minutes from February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, work session and February fourteenth, Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept those meeting, or those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Um, I did have a few little grammatical corrections and I'm sorry, I was gonna try to get with you earlier and didn't get a chance. There... Let me get him, I've got him in my phone, I just need to pull him up. Okay. In my other phone? Here we go. Um, on the minutes, oh. I can't even tell you which line it was, cuz I was doing it on my phone, but there was a line where it said the ability to, it said ability edit, and I just think it was supposed to be ability to edit, just needed to add it in there. Does Mike like to go by Michael now? I just noticed we had his name as Michael Wilkins in there, it's up to you, but it was just a little odd. There's a place where, after it was talking about I.T. and it said Rick May, he may do, it, you need to add May, it just said Rick do, or... Um, Rick, I just need to make a phone call and make sure it's through this system. The phone's right here, how do I do that? That's what I was needing help with, sorry. And then, um, on the line, it starts with can wait, I did start saying the beginning of the line, it said, it needed to say budget at, so if you find that.
Okay, and are all of them on the work session?
Uh, yes, this is the work session. Um, and then, change to and... Don't ask me, I'll have to get with you on these, cuz I put change to and officials at the first of the next line where it says, not the next, but a line that starts out officials, the, change the to they. And then on the commission meeting, was that still considered a special commission meeting? And it didn't say that at the top, that's the only thing I had on that one. Okay?
Okay.
With that, I would second with those corrections.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, report of warrants, Mike, Michael.
I will answer to either one.
Okay.
Okay, warrants from February seventeenth.
Just one of these?
In the amount of, where'd it go? One million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-five, up one million, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Okay, let me try this again, one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. This one had two months' worth of health insurance in it to Cigna for four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven fifty-four. And we also had a one-time payment there to U-Bag for two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And there was one more to Western Fence Company on the, uh, fence around Western Park for forty-six thousand, eight seventy-nine. Rest of them was just normal ones. The February twenty-fourth check run? Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-one cents, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary on that one, and we have no claims today. And these, these hopefully will be the last ones that were not created in the clerk auditor's office.
Okay, any questions, comments, or motions?
No motions, he's just reporting.
Oh, don't need a motion on that.
Just report it.
Yeah, you didn't have any, okay, never mind, sit down, Mike.
Nope, got one more.
Okay.
And I do have the phone ready.
Okay, let's do it. Let's go ahead, go ahead and feast your stuff out.
Cemetery certificates, commissioners. We have one here that is a correction to Rock Point Cemetery Phase Two. Is going to Drex, R. Bowden and Sammy K. Bowden trustees of the Bowden Family Trust, dated December one, nineteen ninety-five, amended October thirty, two thousand and eighteen. So just correcting in the titles, we just need to sign that one, it's already gone through. Next one's Rock Point Cemetery Phase Two, Sherry T. Hill, Block Three Thirty-four, Lot C., Space Five, and then Vernal Memorial Park, David Sadler, Block H, fifty-four and a half, Lot One, Space One.
Okay.
Um, I would make a motion, we approve this cemetery certificates as presented.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now we are going to go to item number ten.
Yes, thank you.
And, uh, it'll be approval of terms for grand rights of select songs for the John Wesley Powell musical. Uh, John Sturmer is not here at this time, Deputy County Attorney, but he's, uh, one that's, uh, been heading this up.
Hi, Joseph, this is Commissioner Sonia Norton. We are ready to put, good morning, we're ready to have you on the agenda, so if you want to, you will be in the meeting, okay?
Thanks, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, are you going to go ahead and just present then on this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, yeah, this is Joseph, good morning. Uh, I think this is really short, but we just needed to, uh, present to the Commission that, um, I guess the status update, what's going on with, uh, the musical and then kind of the proposed arrangement with the, uh, the publishers and rights owners for the songs we plan on using. So, uh, the, the last couple of months have been spent working on, uh, acquiring the correct rights, I think there's, there are twelve or thirteen songs that, uh, John Sturmer's planning on using, um, for the musical. And so, John's worked really hard on, uh, taking phone calls and, you know, emails and working with the publishers to get these rights, and we've made good progress, we've got a couple of people who are ready to sign and a couple of people we're still trying to kind of track down and work with, but the proposed arrangement, I think we wanted to run by the Commission today, is, um, uh, for the rights to these songs is four percent of gross ticket sales, and just FYI, this is kind of the industry standard, this is kind of an arrangement for when you're using other people's music for a musical like this. And that four percent of gross ticket sales, that's not per publisher, what happens with that four percent is to get divided up pro rata, uh, among the thirteen different songs. So basically, you take four percent of ticket sales, divide it by thirteen, and then each song, you know, gets percentage, one thirteenth of that, and then, um, because the numbers aren't really big for, uh, these licensing arrangements, we've, uh, agreed to, in theory, a five thousand dollar minimum, um, that would get split up amongst the publishers, and that, they'll come out, based on our anticipated ticket sales, they'll come out slightly better than, um, they would have otherwise, but of course, the upside for them is they're, they're guaranteed and also they get an upfront payment, it's gonna be like an advance, is the proposal. So, I, I think that John just wanted me to run that by the Commission and ask if there's any questions about those proposed terms. I guess the one other thing is that this, this license will essentially be from August first, two thousand and twenty-three, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, so basically covers, um, final development of the musical, you know, practicing rehearsals, advertising, and then running the musical through the River Festival next year.
Okay.
Are, are there questions, or things I can clarify?
I have a question. If that is, if that is, it's just for one year that we have to pay them, so if we use this music after that, do we have to pay them each time we use it, or do we get to ongoing?
No, that's a great question, it's something we've been working on. Um, we, we've, we've talked to some publishers about this, and this is kind of a, a tricky gray area, because the way this oftentimes works in the industry is that they, that, they'll just grant you licenses when you need them, kind of, for small stuff like this. And if we were coming to them with a, with a big, a big money thing, then they'd be more interested in negotiating, like, hey, what does a long-term run look like? But what, the kind of, in, in practice, what's gonna happen here is, we'll have this license for next year, and let me, I can, let me back up for a second, too. We, because we'd already started talking to publishers last year about the, the proposed timing of River Festival next year, some of these publishers had already presented proposals to us for that time period, and John and I realized it was gonna cause us a lot of problems to kind of go back and say, hey, let's also negotiate an ongoing license. And, and I've, I've talked to some, uh, attorneys out in Los Angeles who regularly deal with these kind of situations with entertainment and shows and Broadway shows and so forth, and the feedback we've gotten is that, well, yes, um, in reality, they could, you know, if things go well next year, they could say, oh, well, you want another license, you're gonna pay a lot for that. But the reality is, that's not what they're gonna do, they're gonna say, oh, okay, well, it's the same terms as before, it's four percent of gross ticket sales, cuz that's just kind of how things work. And so, the current plan that John and I have been working on is, let's get, um, so we don't kind of lose the traction we already have, well, let's get the licenses locked down for next year, and then once those are in place, then we can start reaching out saying, hey, let's also lock down the ongoing, um, the ongoing license situation. So, the, the intent, I guess the summary is, the intent is to make sure we have those rights for, um, to ongoing use of this music, but because of how things have kind of developed, we're gonna do that kind of in piecemeal fashion, where we'll, we'll make sure next year is locked up, and then, as soon as that's locked up, we'll start working on the, the ongoing license situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, did you have a question?
I do have a question, where this is, will be the Outlaw Trail Festival that will actually be paying these commissions, not UNTA County. Because we don't, UNTA...
It will be UNTA County.
It's not the Outlaw Trail, I think it's gonna be a John Wesley Powell play that they're going to be doing, it's not, I don't think it's that...
Not part of the Outlaw Trail Festival, okay.
Yeah, I, I was thinking to do it, the John Wesley Powell Theater, or the production of that, and they may be used over there if they develop the play around it, I, I'm not quite positive on that, Mike.
I guess that's where I was, wanted to make sure, is this, UNTA County's gonna be paying this, or the, the Arts Committee, Arts, whatever?
Do you know that, Joseph, is this like before our Outlaw Trail play that we do each year, or is this a separate play? Do you know anything about that?
John Wesley.
Yeah, let me, I think I can, I can speak to that, John would know better than me, but I, I, we've talked about this a number of times. My understanding is that next year, Outlaw Trail is going to put on the John Wesley Powell musical that UNTA County is developing. So essentially, what's gonna happen is that UNTA County will, they'll end up paying these license fees to get rights to these songs, and then, um, you know, John Sturmer is essentially doing all the footwork, um, to develop the musical, and then Outlaw Trail will be the, uh, the theater company that actually puts on the musical. But they're, they're essentially doing it, um, kind of licensing from UNTA County, essentially, cuz really, we're gonna be the rights holder for, uh, this musical.
Does that answer your question, or are you s... He's saying that once this play then, Outlaw Trail, if they're the ones that put the play on and they're receiving the money from the ticket sales, they're the ones that will be paying for the four percent royalty fees, or whatever you're calling it.
Well, oh...
No, I think we're paying...
Okay, so, this, this question, I think I would need John to answer, to respond to, I think that there's, somehow there's a range with Outlaw Trail about the ticket sales, there's a, there's a UNTA County Outlaw Trail arrangement or an understanding, I don't know if it's been put in eek yet, but yeah, I apologize, John, John knows the nuts and bolts of this, and I, I guess he's on a plane right now or something.
Okay, yes, he's out of the area right now, thank you. And Sonia?
That was my question, is, I didn't want the county to get into it, cuz I thought it was... I thought it was part of the Outlaw Trail Festival.
Oh, you were?
No, no, I thought that's what this was for, I wanna make sure they, they were on the hook for it, not UNTA County.
Well, I think we need to kind of...
I think, I think we are on the hook for it today.
Okay.
You know, right now.
For the four percent?
Or the five thousand minimum, I think, whatever that has to be paid at the end of the year, but I want, I think this contract, if I'm listening correctly here, is with UNTA County.
I don't know the answer, cuz John did not brief me on this one, he said that Mr. Shapiro is gonna be covering it, so he didn't brief me on this.
Well, I think that's something we need to get an answer to, because, um, I believe we set around ten thousand dollars aside for this, to do this musical, if I remember right?
We're gonna, he's gonna develop and make the musical instead of buying it, but I agree with what you're saying there, is that we're gonna be reimbursed by the Outlaw Festival.
Right.
But right now, I think this, today, this is a contract with UNTA County, and, uh, how those details work out, I don't, I don't know.
So if we're the ones that have signed on for this so far, we're just trying to work out the terms of the grand rights, and then, that's the four percent, then we could go into negotiation with the Outlaw Trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct, I think that was...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we could get a motion in front of the Commission to, uh, spend that five thousand dollars to pay for the grand rights, which will essentially be, uh, an advance, but we think will cover the entire thing, cuz we'll, it'll probably be more than we'll owe anyway, a little bit more, but I think that was his intent today, was to get a motion in front of the Commission for that five thousand dollars with the publishers for the grand rights.
Yeah.
Do you know, Joseph, if that is part of this ten thousand that was allotted for this process, or is that in addition to the ten thousand?
Uh, I don't know, I apologize, yeah, that was, that was a John question, I don't, I guess I don't know all the big nuts and bolts.
We can always pass this matter and put it on for, I don't know, I don't know the negotiations, but if that's an answer that you want the answer to before you make a decision on it, I think that it's within the county's right to know the answer before you make a decision, and so, we can either have Karina reach out to John about that now and we can pass it for later, or we can put it on the next Commission meeting agenda.
I don't know if this is time-sensitive.
Okay, I'll have Karina text him.
We got my set part there, I think we, I think we go ahead and pass it.
I'm just concerned, I don't wanna be, I know we, I'm almost sure it was around ten thousand that you approved for this, this project, and I just don't wanna be adding another five thousand to that. If it's included in the ten thousand that you already approved, I'm okay with that, but until I know that, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to move forward.
I'm gonna say, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that wa... that is what's been budgeted, we had the ten thousand, we went over on that, but the five thousand was in that budgeted, or whatever the amount was going to come out.
Do you know, uh, Teagan, if we would be able to approve this, subject to if it is included, then this approval would go forward, but if not, it would come back to the Commission, can we do that?
I don't see any reason why you couldn't do that. Um, and I, like I said, I don't know if they, I don't, I know nothing about this agreement, I know nothing at all, but if you're hesitant to approve it and you wanna make sure, then my advice would be that you make sure that you have all the facts before you make a decision.
Okay.
We could do just what you said in your motion there, or what your comments were if we wanted, and...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion on the terms for grand rights of selected songs for the John Wesley Powell musical that we approve, up to ten thousand dollars for that.
That has been allowed, already approved.
That has already been budgeted. Been budgeted for.
Okay, if this five thousand is included in that ten thousand, then we will go ahead and move forward with this.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll amend my budget, or my...
Yeah, sorry, I would second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Okay, thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To, you sum it up, we did go ahead and approve it, um, uh, we already have budgeted ten thousand dollars, so if this is included in that ten thousand dollars, then it has been approved, that's what we're just gonna get clarification on.
Okay, sounds good, and I'll probably talk with John later on today and make sure that we...
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, take care.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Rick, thank you.
I didn't know it was that easy. Sorry, I didn't know it was that easy, I thought it was a more complicated thing to do and call.
Okay, Barbara?
I have one item this morning, I'm requesting a refund of taxes for the amount of one hundred, one dollar and six cents, uh, for the tax year two thousand and twenty-three, business personal property, account number two seven eight zero, and they overpaid on their account.
Okay, any questions, comments, motions?
Okay, I would do it, but I forgot my pen, so I couldn't write the amount down, so I will...
One oh one.
One oh one point, oh six.
Correct.
I will approve, I move to approve this, um, refund, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
A second.
I'll share it with you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, bid award, book preservation services, Brenda McDonald.
Brenda McDonald, UNTA County Recorder, there was only one bid that came in for the scope of work that we put out for the mining books in the recorder's office, and that was with Co-File, and so I'd like to, they did cover everything, we went over the bid and everything that we asked for, they have covered on there. The bid total was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, where's that page? That was close to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, let's see. There it is, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. And they will completely go in and clean those pages up, back in the day, it was common practice to tape pages that were ripped, but they found over time that the acid in the tape destroys the paper, and so we do have a lot of books that are gonna have to have a lot of cleanup in the mining, so...
This is pretty much what you anticipated the cost would be?
It is, yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, any questions? Budget, I guess you have it in your budget?
Yes, I asked for that in the budget last year.
Okay, motions?
Make a motion that we accept that bid and award it to...
Co-File Industries.
Co-File.
Um, Co-File, just Co-File.
Okay, Co-File, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
I will second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, uh, emergency management, M.O.U. with, uh, UNTA School District for the use of facilities. Heidi, how are you?
Good, Heidi Lundberg, Emergency Management, um, so I worked with the school district and John's office to, uh, get this M.O.U. with the school district for, um, to use their facilities in an emergency, and so, um, they were okay with moving forward with it, and so I have this to present to you today, so...
John's looked it all over and helped you through that, so we have that, all right, any questions?
That's correct, he, he did review it and approved it.
Perfect.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions?
Um, if no questions or comments, I make a motion that we approve the M.O.U. with Emergency Management in UNTA School, UNTA County Emergency Management and the UNTA School District.
Have a motion.
I'd second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. All right, item number seven. Resolution two, twenty-seven, two zero, two three, R. One, renaming a portion of Sunshine Bench Road, number fourteen twenty-two, Middle Brush Creek Road, fourteen fifteen, revisions number oh one dash twenty-three to the transportation plan map, Jordan Merrill.
That's a mouthful.
Did everything for me.
Okay, well, all right, I thought there, before I got started, I should've quit, but right there, but anyway.
You did, uh, George Merrill, or Jordan Merrill, um, sorry, and G.I.S. We wanna do this, I'm just presenting this, uh, resolution, uh, to rename part of the Sunshine Bench Road, uh, to Middle Brush Creek, and with that, the number changes also, so...
All right, any questions, comments, uh? As I understand it, Jordan, the Sunshine Bench Road up on the bench, the road going from what you wanna rename fourteen fifteen, from that point north and up, or actually it's east and up, would retain the fourteen twenty?
It would be, uh, from the, the portion that goes of Sunshine Bench that is, uh, bladed, dirt bladed, uh, would remain Sunshine Bench, and it's the paved part of the current Sunshine Bench that would be renamed, and that goes from about right where the Brush Creek Road, um, intersection area, all the way up to the Diamond Mountain Highway.
And this was reviewed and approved by the county attorney's office?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I'd make a motion that we accept Resolution O. Two, twenty-seven, twenty-three, R. One, renaming Sunshine Bench Road, number fourteen twenty, to Middle Brush Creek Road, number fourteen fifteen, which is a revision to the oh one twenty-three transportation plan map.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Oh, you still got a pen?
All right, uh, ordinance, uh, two, two seven, twenty, twenty-three, short-term rentals. Matt, I'm not gonna go through all the details there, I'm just, uh, fuck off from there.
Uh, yeah, so Matt Kazir, Community Development Office, or Department. This was actually brought to me by Barbara Semper, the county assessor, and she asked if I had to... And she has to provide help in um making an amendment to our business license title, which is Title Five, um which would require uh short-term rentals or sometimes known as nightly rentals. People that have those type, that type of a business um to apply for and obtain a business license with UNT County. So um the section that's being amended is section. Um, it's under Title Five and it's uh chapter uh five point zero four. And it will be adding a new section, which will be five point zero four point zero four one, uh short-term rentals. So it's pretty basic. Uh, the first part of this is uh defining what we mean by short-term rentals because there could be uh different jurisdictions or things may have different interpretations of what a short-term rental is. So they're referred to as both short-term rentals and nightly rentals. And so we go down through the what that what that means. Uh, basically, these are properties that are used uh that are rented out in terms that are less than thirty thirty days or less. And so um it's similar to a motel or a hotel, but it's a piece of residential property. So it's not categorized as a hotel or motel in a commercial area, but um it's people that are using their residential properties or uh residential uh uses within a commercial building uh for this short-term rental, so. Um, and then we also define what remuneration means, uh which is compensation, money, rent or other bargain for considerations given in return for occupancy. And then the second section here is B and it just, it says a license is required. And it says no person shall operate or engage in any short-term rental activity within UNT County without first obtaining and maintaining a valid UNT County business license. Now, uh, this will only apply to um those areas that are in the, in the unincorporated portion of UNT County. The cities Vernal, Naples, Ballard, uh they would have to adopt their own ordinance in order to enforce that within their city limits. Okay, uh, the second part is each owner of property within UNT County that is being used as a short-term rental must obtain a business license. An owner may allow his or her agent to apply for and obtain the business license. However, the license shall be in the property owner's name and filed under the property owner's name in the county license records. Properties that are being used as short-term rental properties prior to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three will have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to obtain a business license. So those that are, because we know that there are some that are currently being uh rented out as short-term rentals. And that's okay, the the county hasn't had this rule in place before. So those that are currently operating will have it, will have the remainder of this year to obtain a business license. Um, any new ones that come in though would be required to get a business license at the time that they start business. Uh, number four, going down through this, an individual owner who owns multiple short-term rental properties must obtain a separate license for each short-term rental property and may list up to four short-term rental property locations on one license application. Uh, property managers and property management companies may not include uh multiple short-term rental properties on one license. And then number five, sales tax for each location must be reported and remitted to the Utah State Tax Commission as per current state regulations and requirements. Uh, number six, if an owner of a short-term rental is using a DBA, the DBA must be registered with Utah Department of Commerce. And uh this ordinance would take effect fifteen days from enactment. Um, so if that ends up being today, that's on there. If it ends up being a different day, we would amend that. And so that's the whole ordinance, um simply requiring a business license. What this will do, um if somebody does come in and apply for a business license for a short-term rental, uh we'll, we'll make sure their property is in compliance with current uh county ordinances, like we do with any other business license. So if um if there's not any issues on the property, the business license would be issued. If, for example, if somebody comes in to apply for one and the building that they're wanting to use doesn't have a a building permit or there's some zoning problems with the property, um we would let them know that they need to get those issues corrected before the license could be issued.
I just did have one question that came up as I was reading number four. To me, it's just a little confusing because you're saying a separate license for each short-term rental property. But then you say and may list up to four locations. I'm like, can we word that so it's a little bit more? I mean, um, something that's saying maybe they obtain a license for short-term rental properties and may list up to four property locations on one license, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we could probably just change it to say an individual owner who owns multiple short-term rentals
may list up to four short-term rental property locations on one license application. So we could cut out that little part.
Yeah, I think that would make it a little bit easier to understand.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Entertained a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance number zero two zero two seven two zero two three oh one, short-term rentals um with the changes as noted.
We have a motion.
I'd second.
Secondly, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see. I guess you got number nine too.
Uh, actually, Deanna from our office.
Oh, Deanna.
That's okay.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Re, rezone to the fire suppression SSD from A three to C one in Tridell.
Yes, I'm Deanna Nyberg with Community Development. Um, okay, just trying to get this situated.
We need a remote for that one.
Okay, so this is a one acre parcel located in Tridell. The address is one zero five one two north eight thousand east, parcel number one two zero one one zero one one four. It's currently zoned A three and the applicant is requesting C one zoning. Um, if you're looking at the map here, we could zone in or zoom in a little bit, but um this is just the main road that goes through Tridell. Here's the church parking lot and then the park owned by Tridell Community. The parcel we're talking about is right here at the top. It's owned by UNT Fire Suppressions uh Special Service District. And they are wanting to, let's see, I guess we'll look here. Okay, they're wanting to go to C one. All the property around this property um is zoned A three currently. And if we zoom out a little bit, there is a little bit of mining and grazing here to the east. And then to the north, there's some recreation um and forestry and mining. Looking at the future land use, this is just a snippet of or a picture of the future land use. This is mostly agricultural. This little property right here that's outlined in blue is the property that we're talking about. This red is proposed commercial for the future. So it's just barely outside of that, but commercial is something that um, it's not hard and fast lines. It's just kind of recommended general area that they would like to have commercial. So it is within the general area. Okay, so this parcel, it was created under um in accordance with UNT County Code one six zero one zero three zero G, which allows a parcel to be subdivided for government purposes without going through the subdivision process. Um, as long as there is a deed restriction recorded on the property. So in the future, if that ever changed, then it would need to go through the minor subdivision process. It has, was not required. Let's see here. Okay, they applied for a rezone in January. The fee that was required was waived by County Commission um at a meeting on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, the Planning Commission heard this application on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. At that meeting, there was no public comment and the Planning Commission recommended approval uh to the county commissioners with a vote of four to zero. And some pictures if you want to see them later. Um, the finding of facts and conclusions of law, um they're found in the staff report that was sent to you. Um, but based on the analysis of UNT County Code, this application appears to meet the required standards outlined in the county code and general plan.
All right, this is for the expansion of the Tridell Fire Department.
They're going.
Station over there.
They want to build a fire to sure, yeah.
Little bit of a library in there, a small.
Community center, right.
Community building, uh, very exciting what's going on there. So anyway, we'll uh go ahead and, any other questions or comments? Make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we allow the rezoning of seal number twelve eleven one one four from A three to C one.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you. All right, Jess.
Commissioners, sorry to interrupt. I did, if we could return to number ten. I did hear back from Karina who was able to get ahold of John. And she said, and according to my text message, it says that the five thousand is part of the fifteen thousand in the budget for this year.
Okay, that was fifteen, man. Thank you.
And then um she also asked about the ticket sales, but hasn't heard back on that.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
All right, Jess, you're number eleven.
I'm number eleven.
Sitla's, Sitla Office Space Lease Agreement.
Yes, uh, Jess Herman from UNT County Facilities. We are renewing the contract with Sitla. They rent uh office space right down the hall here. This will be a five-year contract. It goes from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. The original lease amount was one thousand. We have increased that to eleven hundred per month. And then on July first of each year, starting July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, the rent will increase two point five percent each year just to keep up with inflation. It's already been signed by them. It's just needing your guys' signatures. Um, so I'm brought it before you to approve that to to keep leasing that spot to them.
Any questions, comments? Uh, you know, probably what, about five years ago, Sitla?
Yep.
Uh, we lobbied them. They brought out an employee, uh, uh, put it here in our office that was to take care of the Sitla land around here locally. It's been a great addition. Since then, they've hired a second employee.
Yeah, they have several in there.
Yep, and so it's been a a good asset for the community and county.
Good local resource.
Yes.
Yes.
So uh, any other questions, comments, uh, motions?
I would make a motion that we approve the Sitla Office Space Lease Agreement Amendment Number Two as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Jess.
Oh.
I just need to sign that.
I'm going to borrow your board appointments sheet.
Oh, you got your board appointment? Just put them on.
Okay, oh, okay.
I liked how you slapped that in there. Okay, upper. Board appointments, Sonia.
I'm not going to say your boards.
Yes, you have to.
I have three boards that now have openings that need to be replaced. So first, we'll start with the Career Service Board. Uh, there is a vacation on that. This would be a three-year term that ends July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And I propose that we uh fill that with Julie Freestone.
Okay, we probably ought to do these one at a time.
I was gonna say, we probably ought.
Okay, we have a motion. I think that was in the form of that motion.
I motion that we.
I'll second it. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, another opening we have is on the Museum Board. This wa- is to fill in Cheryl Lone Bear's appointment. She has vacated her term there. And so this term only goes to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And I would make a motion that we approve Darlene, I don't know how you say her name. It's K O E R N E R, Corner, just Corner, Darling Corner.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have.
I'll second, I'm the second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, my last one is for the Planning Commission Board. I'm very pleased to state that we had two applicants. Um, this was a position that was vacated uh by Jason Jensen, who we appreciate him serving on the commission, but he has had to vacate his position. So this position would serve until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And I pro- I would make a motion that we appoint Zachary, I don't know how you say it, Moody?
Moody.
Moody to fill that position.
We have a motion.
I'd second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
In my division, which is UNT Healthcare SSD, has an opening. And I would recommend Terry Reimer. Her term will start today and it'll end December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And I place that in a motion.
Have a motion.
Aye, second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, public comments. Seeing none. Uh, we have the need today of a closed session. We will uh need to move that to the small.
Recession.
Recession to the small conference room at that one o'clock, so.
Yep, and and you need a motion for that. So I would make a motion that we will recess until one PM when we will go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent litigation. Then after that is complete, we would come back into commission meeting and adjourn.
I'd second that.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We are recessed.
Oh, I move we adjourn then. Oh, yeah, we already did.